Thank you for joining us this evening, council members and staff. We have a called Fort Mill Town Council meeting today, June the 11th. It is 5:00 PM. There is public access by phone. Dial toll-free 1-877-309-2073. I can hear an echo for myself, I don't know why. And use access code 268-5741. We're calling the meeting to order. We can do the pledge of allegiance. I'll start. A pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. I'll offer the invocation, since Ronnie, I've leaned on you the last four times. Heavenly Father, thank you so much for bringing us together today. It has been a difficult year, and we are very grateful for your presence among us. Please continue to guide us to do the things that are best for our community, and our neighbors, and everyone that lives around us. Please help heal our world, Father, in his name we pray. Amen. All right. We have public comments, maybe submitted in writing to the town clerk via mail at 200 Town Tom Hall Street, Fort Mill, South Carolina, 29715, or by email at vburgess@fortmillsc.gov. When submitting a comment, please include your name and address for the record. All public comments received at least one hour prior to the start of the meeting will be presented to town council by staff during the information discussion portion of the meeting. And I think I have been doing just the opposite and inviting those comments at this point, so today I'll do it right. Old business items. There are no old business items on our agenda this evening. New business items. New business item number one, consideration of an emergency ordinance relating to the incremental reopening of parks and recreational facilities and programs. Chris Pettit is our expert on that, and I will need a motion to open this item.
I make a motion to accept business item number one.
You have a motion to accept? Do I have a second? I've got a second for Chris Moody by show of hand. All right, Mr. Pettit.
Yes, Mayor. So, this item, I think we probably want to discuss this item and new business item number two together. So, with new business item number one, we are ratifying the decisions made by council at your meeting Monday night. We are doing that by emergency ordinance to supersede the last emergency ordinance that we did on parks and basically establish the new rules and regulations based off your actions Monday night. So, there's nothing new in new business item one's ordinance, just clarifying or ratifying the decisions made Monday night into our emergency ordinance on parks.
Okay. Barry, will we not, because they are separate on the agenda, need to do a vote on item one, and then open item two and do a vote on item two?
That is correct.
Okay. I like it when I get it right. Okay. Are there any questions for Chris on the intent in new business item number one, or in our vote from Monday night, and this being related to that?
So, these are just bringing this to our emergency ordinance, essentially?
Correct, yes. It's amending our last emergency ordinance to include what was voted upon Monday night. The reason I was saying that new business item number one and two are kind of tied together is because we've written two versions of the ordinance for consideration this evening. One includes everything that was discussed Monday evening. A second version includes everything that was discussed Monday evening, but it adds on the reopening of town-owned park picnic shelters. So, that's, if council wishes to reopen the picnic shelters, we have a version of this emergency ordinance for that, and we would just need the motion to basically outline a desire to reopen the picnic shelters in addition to everything that was discussed on Monday.
Okay. Just for administrative reasons, does that mean we, if we want to include the park picnic shelters, the right thing to do is vote down the motion to accept item one, and then accept item two, and it would include everything? I'm confused as to why they're two separate pieces.
I think, Chris, I think, Chris, I think you set it up so that you had the flexibility to do the shelters if council so desired, right?
Correct. And we're talking about just shelters, why people are at the park, they can go into the shade. We're not talking about using them as, you cannot rent them yet.
Not rent them, but use them while at the park, right?
At Harris Street Park, that shelter, if someone's out there, they can just walk underneath it, cool off, get back out. That's all we're talking about, bare bones, minimus, right?
Not to exceed the governor's recommendations for gatherings.
That's correct.
Okay. All right. Everybody have a basic understanding of the motion on the table to accept new business item number one, and we do have a second. Do we have further questions? Has Larry joined us?
I think so.
I thought I heard somebody come in. Okay, Chris, how do you vote?
I vote yes.
Hi, Jamie?
I vote yes.
I vote yes, and Ronnie?
Oh, yes.
All right. So, that's a four yeses for new business item number one. New business item number two, consideration of reopening town-owned park picnic shelters. This will be Davy Broom is our expert. I need a motion, please.
I make the motion to accept new business item number two.
Okay. I need a second. I have a second. All right. Davy, what you want to say?
Okay, Mayor, so since you, the first new business item, you, the motion included the opening of the picnic shelters, we don't have to act on item number two now. We weren't sure at the time, when we wrote the two ordinances, one was to have it, have the ordinance to reflect what you voted on Monday night. The second ordinance was to reflect new business item number two. So, in the discussion, it was determined that we would allow the opening of the picnic shelter, so we will provide that ordinance, including in that language that you voted on for that, to update the emergency ordinance.
Okay.
So, you essentially acted on item two when you acted on item one.
All right. Barry, since we have a motion and a second on the table, do we need to go ahead and vote even though it's duplicating action in the first one?
You can. I mean, that's probably the cleanest thing to do.
That's what I was thinking. Even though we don't have to, I think it would make it simpler for the record, okay? So, we have-
Davy, one question.
Go ahead.
Now, so how, what was the purpose of, why do we even have this second business item if new business item number one supersedes it? I'm just for my own clarification and understanding.
Yeah. New business item number one, we, whenever you set the original emergency ordinance, you closed down everything in the park.
Right.
And so, what we said to you Monday night was, we reopened the playground, we had already reopened the playground, not playgrounds, but the parks themselves, minus the playgrounds. As of Monday's reading, you opened, you included opening the playgrounds. So, that, again, we needed to ratify the agreement based on that. If you had, we were bringing to you tonight to open the playground picnic shelters. So, again, in hindsight, we could have switched the two, one and two, and would have been a cleaner version, but that's, we cannot, we can't get the ordinance down pat until we know what you vote on.
Right, okay.
And so, that's in the discussion, when you included the picnic shelters in that, then that made it cleaner, but in order to do the right thing, let's go ahead and vote on item two, and that should take care of both items at one time.
Okay.
All right. We have an acceptance, a motion to accept, and a second. Are there any further questions on new business item number two? Hearing none. Chris, how do you vote?
I want to vote no to this, right, because it superseded in the first one. I'm just clarifying.
I think we, we want to see it as a standalone. Yeah, I'm going to vote yes, so I'll, I'll vote first. I'm going to vote yes. Ronnie?
Yes.
Hi, Jamie?
Yes.
And Chris?
I'm a yes.
All right. Thank you for getting through that. I hope we never have to close down stuff again and have to figure out how to carefully and safely reopen it. This is all, again, something we just haven't done in my time, so thank you all for your patience as we get through, ensuring that we do everything the proper way. We have an information discussion item. There will be no vote on this item. It is simply to begin discussions. I have talked independently several times in regards to an effort, actually, this goes all the way back to a meeting our council had with the county council and TDK at Nation Ford High School several years ago, where we talked about what could we do jointly that might be of benefit to the planning of the region as a whole. So, we talked about this, and there've been continued conversations about it. So, recently, there's been an effort to perhaps get to a point of understanding, like, how might it be handled? Initially, going into these conversations, you know, certainly, we talked about the benefit of doing our 10-year plan. Yeah, I don't know why I'm getting feedback. Thank you.
If everyone, if everyone will place their, I was on mute.
I think that's what caused the feedback. When Chris paused, I got the feedback. I don't have it now. We're almost finished, so hang tight. Initially, you know, the discussions were pretty simple. We were going to look at any proposal that might impact the region as a whole, and involve, like, our 10-year plan or our five-year update, and we were going to at least sit at the table with the planning folks from TDK and from the county to see how, you know, what comments are there. There's always good to have more eyes on a project to ensure that we're doing everything we need to do. That, through the discussions over the last several months, has evolved into a request that we develop a planning advisory committee that would include two individuals from each of the municipalities, and two individuals, and we're talking about citizens, from the county, our planners, respective planners, and that they would review collectively and make recommendations or advisements. They have no voting capacity whatsoever. You know, everything sounds great until you start looking at the timeframe. I, for one, feel like our planning commission has operated very well, and has done a very good job to date. Unfortunately, because of the schedules of when we would be reviewing items as an advisory committee, it would precede our own planning commissions receiving information for their own review. These meetings would be public, they would be noticed, and where I think, you know, there's always value in sharing information, I do not think we're at a point to where I'm comfortable personally with having discussions on items that our own planning group has not had an opportunity to review. You were provided a number of documents. Penelope is our planner currently, and she's put a lot of effort into outlining and describing some of the challenges with doing this, and some of the benefits with doing it. So, the intent wasn't to do anything more this evening than to take advantage of our being collective and say, please read through that information. Do you have any questions that we might be able to address? Or, you know, we will have this on another council meeting going forward, but it's a lot of information, and it's a lot to consider. So, just wanted to do something a little more towards, you know, broach the topic, get information in your hands, give you ample opportunity to review and ask questions before we ever put it to a vote.
So, we would not, our own planning commission wouldn't receive the information prior to the regional planning getting it? Is that what you said?
That's pretty much what was outlined, and it's a timing issue in regards to when the county has their planning set up, when TK has theirs, and when we have ours. The suggested timeframe would be at the end of the month, which would precede our planning commission meeting, and you know as well as I do, they get information before that meeting, but not weeks before. So, I just felt uncomfortable about that. And, you know, through discussion, it may turn out to be fine, but I had some heartburn with it. I voiced that concern, and Penelope and I have talked about it a couple of times. So, we just wanted to get council involved in those discussions and start bringing along the information flow, so that council would have ample opportunity to review it and make comment to it prior to a vote.
And when would this vote? I mean, I know we do two readings. First reading would be next Monday?
We were asked to sign the resolution several weeks ago, and I said I can't until my council has had a strong opportunity to review and discuss. So, they know that, you know, we are presenting information and we are having discussions. I do believe there are quite a few hands in the process of trying to determine legally, how do we do that to not violate any of the planning guidelines that are given to municipalities and to the county. So, this is really just to get information in your hands formally, and give you more time to ask questions and study it. We often complain that we're asked to make decisions on the spot, so this is a really good opportunity to do this in advance.
I mean, the planning process now, the whole government process, by the time our planning commission vets things, then it comes to us for two readings, and now we're adding another layer of bureaucracy on top of that. It can even further, you know, if there's a commercial project, can something like that be expedited? That's more, you know, or, you know, if there's a big hot bug issue, it's, in my mind, reading this documentation can, we're having to wait on another advisory board.
It does not, there's nothing in any of the language that says, excuse me, that this, this committee or advisory board would take away the opportunity to vote in a timely manner. Excuse me. You know, it doesn't preclude our, our opportunity for our planning commission or our councils to vote.
All right. I understand that. It's just, I know that anything government takes a longer time, and I feel like this is another added layer, just by what I've read in the material, you know, and hearing the comments, but, you know, you have to think regionally, you have to think strategic, and I understand that, and I'll definitely consider all options on the table when reading through this material. Thank you for bringing it to our attention.
It, again, it's been talked about for years. I don't think, it sounds like a wonderful option and an action to take, but I don't think anybody understood how much effort would be required to ensure that it was fair to all, and that we didn't delay any projects or release information before it was fully vetted. You know, it's very complicated.
I was under the, this thing first came around, that it was to share information with the municipalities in the area of York County for big projects like the football stadium, Kingsley, Knowledge Park, things like that. But the more I look into this, it's overreach of the county dictate what the municipalities can and cannot do, or to throw their two cents in the news, like everybody else knows, hang them in empathy before our vote even can happen, and our people can look at it and make an educated decision. So, I think it's a bunch of hoi polloi. If you want to make a, if you want to take a good idea and screw it up even more, no offense, Barry, throw a couple lawyers in it and watch them screw it up.
Oh, my goodness.
That's how you really feel.
Yeah. I do think, as we moved forward in talking about how it might be managed, there were quite a few questions in regards, there was even a step further into developing a joint planning commission. I have issues that particularly in historic areas and overlays within our community, you know, having a group of people that aren't, aren't trained or have been exposed to those, I don't see how you could make decisions effectively for the community without having that information in hand.
Now, and I can see, as you just said, I mean, we're getting closer and closer to the TDK border, and they are just as well getting close to us, so I can see something where exchange of information between us would be prudent. You don't want to have two Walmarts right across the street from each other. But, on the other side, want some other entity telling us, oh, no, you guys can't put that there because we don't want it there. Well, I don't care what you want. This is what's best for Fort Mill, period.
I hear you clearly. I hear you clearly.
A non-bidging board, but just, this is correct. I mean, this is information sharing. I mean, even if there was a particular project, and they, the two other, or three other parties, you know, I see the COGS, the school boards on here, school district, TDK and the county, might not, they might say, we don't, we're the four one vote, where they were, we were the one approved, and they were the four no's, it would still ultimately come to us for our approval, no matter what.
Correct. That is, that is correct, but I do think there's a modicum of pressure that comes from a group advisement that perhaps, you know, from a different perspective of our planning commission or our own council, I do think there's a modicum of pressure that comes from having other groups provide that advisement, that we would have to all be ready to accept.
Yeah.
Okay? Ronnie? Yeah, we do need to chew on it. We do need to consider, I just think this is very complicated, and I don't want to step into anything, nor refuse the opportunity to work with others in the region, but I do think, from an ARFAT's perspective, this is never easy. You know, as we talk about where road money goes, it's never easy, because everybody has needs.
Yeah, and just like in ARFAT's, where they're going to try to equal this out, well, we only have two representatives from each section, but amazingly enough, Rock Hill still outnumbers our vote. This will be the same way.
The way the regional ARFAT's is set up, in fact, we don't really have a full seat, TDK or Fort Mill. We were extended that from the group in Rock Hill, so that we would have a full person at each meeting. I never really understand it, but it is federally set up by population.
This is the most important thing this year. Anybody who's listening to this, please fill out your census and send it in.
It is extremely important, extremely important, and the hard thing is everything we're going through with COVID, and, you know, people not being at work, and it's very, very difficult to remember the importance of it, but we have to. Any further questions?
I see a thing like this being dusted off. If we decide to do a water treatment point on the north side of the river that included the county, Fort Mill, and TDK, these guys getting dusted off, if we had a giant development going in like Kingsley again, or if Rock Hill was going to, I saw the property on the other side of 21 Bridge is for sale, and they put a big development sign on the front there, that's stuff that we need to be notified of. As to everything else, no. As for them to have a voting power or say, no. It's nothing but a sharing of information, period. To make it into this entity where, because I can see it growing, and I can see it, like, it's coming like the sun, where it's going to suddenly start taking on powers, and then it's just going to be nothing but a power grab, so that we no longer have our own ability to zone or approve things. It's all going to have to go through that, and I do not, I do not believe in that. I believe in the towns being able to govern themselves, just like the counties themselves, just like the state governs itself, period.
Do we have a staff, Davy? Is Penelope on?
She is not.
Chris?
She's not.
Chris is on, right?
Yes. Penelope had a prior commitment, and, you know, we were pretty short-leashed in getting this pulled together.
Yeah. Oh, I get that, yeah. Chris, are you available?
I'm here.
So, what is, in your discussions with staff, planning, what are their thoughts?
I mean, ultimately, it is, it is the decision of council.
Right.
And that's here to implement that decision. It's something that exists elsewhere. It's not common, though.
Where else is it in the state? Where are other regional? We have the COGS, county governments, that are regional planning, but in this instance, can you give me another, where else, something like this?
Yeah, I mean, I can't off the top of my head give you an example, but I do know there are setups like this, a lot of which are more specific, like a certain project, rather than just always there type things, but it's not something that I've seen often in this type of setting and format.
I'd be curious. Go ahead.
I'm sorry, but only one that I've ever seen that is in full-time, like, just what Chris said, it comes out only when large projects are on the board. The only one that I have ever defined, doing the research in the small amount of time that I've had, is Minneapolis-St. Paul, and that's just because they cross two states, and they're right on top of each other, and they don't want to duplicate, and they don't want, that's it. We're not in that scenario.
No, I do agree with you, Jamie, from the standpoint of, were we to undertake, you know, I believe wholeheartedly we have to look at water plant on this side of the river. I believe wholeheartedly that collectively, we need to look at an incinerator, rather than continue to fill landfill in York. Those are discussions that would benefit greatly from municipalities sitting down with one another and looking at regional impacts. I totally agree, you know, that those are things that could end up on an agenda and benefit from it, but I've just got a lot of caution into adding, Chris said it perfectly, a lot of layers to how we do what we do, and I think we're doing rather well at it. All right.
So, about reading material, it's a three-week delay, right?
Beg your pardon?
For planning commission from the time, in the packet, you know, our material.
Yes.
So, it's a three-week delay, is what I'm reading, and, I mean, we have so many layers of government already, it just drives me up the wall to want to know that we're even considering, I'm open to consideration, considering this, but delaying our, our planning commission three weeks, when, you know, sometimes, these people donate their time, I mean, they give it away for nothing to our town, those agendas sometimes are over 150 pages, and I, you know, for people who donate their time, and I know I'm not going to take any more time over to this, I'm just going to have to seriously think hard about this, and I'd like to, you know, sit down with staff and have a spirited discussion, and I'll stop it now. Thank you.
Thanks for the comments. It's always good for us to discuss things far in advance of making decisions, so I truthfully appreciate the patience to try to at least start those discussions today. With that, we do have one executive session item. It is a discussion of negotiations, incident to proposed. It is discussion of negotiations, incident to proposed contractual agreements. Do I have a motion to go into executive session?
So may I?
Or second?
Okay, I have a motion in a second. Before we vote, please note that no vote will be taken in executive session whatsoever and that we will return to open session afterwards. So, Chris, how do you vote to go into executive session?
Vote yes.
Thank you, Jamie?
I vote yes.
Ronnie?
Yeah.
And I do too. So we will now move into executive session.
I'm here.
I'm also, yes, so will that cut off the record?
Yes, Mayor, if you'll give us a few minutes, we, we need to set this up real quick, but we'll, we'll let you know when we're ready.
Do we stay in this call, or do we hang up and call back?
You'll stay in this call.
All right. Larry, thanks for joining us.
Yes, ma'am, I had the wrong time in mind.
Uh-oh, that's okay. That's all right. That's all good. So guys, I've been watching the news. Y'all watch the stock market today?
I did.
Thank you for your, yeah, thank you for your patience as we have gotten through our executive session discussion. No vote was taken in that session. I need a motion to return to regular session.
Make the motion to return to regular session.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Okay, Ronnie, how do you vote?
Yes.
I'll vote yes. Jamie?
Yes.
Chris?
Yes.
Okay, let the record reflect that we have returned to regular session and that no vote was taken during our executive session discussion. With that, I can't thank- Beg your pardon?
You didn't want me to vote on that?
Oh, Larry, I'm sorry. I'm sorry. I'm, I'm, I'm sorry, Larry. I'm sorry. This is not the easiest thing. I, I try to be diligent and keep us on the schedule. So Larry, how would you like to vote on that?
I vote yes.
Thank you, Larry, and thank you for your forgiveness. All right, we're back in regular session. We don't have any further items. I, I thank each and every one of you for everything that you do. I would like to say I've gotten several pleasant phone calls today about the canceling of the Fourth of July event, and we put out a news release about that this afternoon. I know it's not a surprise to many people. It is unfortunate, but, you know, other communities around us have had to do the same. And I look at the cancellation of the Boston Marathon for the first time in 127 years, and it's in September, to be indicative that we all are trying to be as cautious as possible with each other's health. So it's a sad time for us not to be able to do one of the things that I think we do best. But we're, we're pretty resilient, folks, and I appreciate the efforts to get some virtual opportunities out there for our communities so that we can celebrate together virtually. So with that, I'll entertain a motion for adjournment.
I'll make the motion adjourn.
All right, and I have a second?
Second.
All right, Larry, how do you vote?
In favor of adjourning.
All righty, Chris?
Yes.
Jamie?
Yes.
I'll say yes, and Ronnie?
Yes.
All right, well, this meeting is adjourned, and I'm in search of supper. So you guys have a great evening.
You too. Thank you.
Thanks a bunch. Bye.